Recording because I think this is Don Wartella and Rick Holmes will be representing the council.
Good evening.
Hi, Don.
Hey, Don. Don, are you up in Michigan still or you headed down south this year?
Unfortunately, I'm back in Michigan. I had a, my wife broke her arm in China, so.
Hey, I'm gonna jump a different topic here before we start this and I'm gonna let Charlie Church know, but you'll, we, the driveway closest to the pavilion at the historic village is, you'll start to see some heavy equipment parked over in those open areas. It's related to the infrastructure project. So I just want, it's not going to be by the buildings or anything. It'll be east of the pavilion and maybe just alongside that gravel road.
I saw they were cutting down some trees today.
Yeah, they started downtown along the route there, so.
Michelle.
Hey, Jim, I just want to confirm that you are gonna have the agenda on the screen.
Yep. Just give me, just give me a minute to get it there. Well, but I have, I have that set up and as well as the oath for Mr. Holmes.
Okay.
Hey, Don, please tell Maureen Jenny and I send out our well wishes for her and I'll let Jen know here shortly if she hasn't joined already about Michelle injuring herself.
I will do that. Thank you.
And when I'm in Florida in two weeks, I'll be thinking of you.
Well, I hope you have time. Yeah, she had a complete shoulder replacement, so.
Really?
Yeah. She had a reverse shoulder replacement. They had to turn the ball and the socket around and she's coming along. She's about three weeks after surgery and we're going to physical therapy there in Vicksburg PT1. So it's gonna be a long process, but she's making progress.
So her years as a starter sounds like are behind her. She's a, she's gonna be a relief pitcher from now on, coming off the bench, it sounds like.
It could very well be.
I have not usually Mr. Hunt's in. I'm gonna mute and try to call him real quick. Give me one second, Matt, and I think we'll probably run Bill off the phone.
Okay.
And just so all the planning commission members are aware, hey, Bill, we're gonna start the planning commission meeting here in seconds, but we're gonna, if you hang on the phone with us, you can listen to it, okay?
All right, I'll get my computer and get it on here.
Yeah, but keep the phone right by you. If you are in a location other than the village of Vicksburg, we'll need to, you'll need to say so. And I know, Don, you'll, you'll have to give your address being just out of the village. It's underneath the new legislation, so.
Very good.
Okay, no, I don't know.
And anytime you wanna start, Mr. Schenkel, I have 7:01.
Okay.
And let me, I'll, as I say that, let me see if I can get this.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:02, the Monday, let's see, February 8th, 2021. Let's do attendance and as, excuse me, village manager Mallory stated, if you're not physically present inside of the village of Vicksburg, you do need to state where you're, you're tuning in from. Is that a physical address that needs to accompany that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Secretary DeBolt, can you take attendance for us, please?
Schenkel.
Here.
Manchester.
Here.
Mucha.
Present.
Frisbee.
Yeah.
Newman. There here.
Chris is on the call. I've asked him to unmute.
Newman, yep. Cox.
Here.
Hunt, which will be on the phone.
He just said here.
Yep, I can hear him. Wartella.
Here and my address is 5602 East UV Avenue, Vicksburg.
And DeBolt.
Here.
Mr. Schenkel, we do have one addition for the agenda. Would like to add agenda item of 3A and that is an oath for Mr. Holmes.
Great. So we do have an amendment to the agenda 3A. I will call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
This is Wartella. I'd move to approve the agenda for February 8th, 2021, as amended.
Thank you. Do we have support?
This is Manchester. I'll move to support it.
Thank you. Secretary DeBolt, can you do a roll call for us, please? Yes. John, we're getting some pretty bad feedback through your mic.
That may, yeah, that's Manchester.
He said, John, if you can hear me, I'll, remember Mucha?
Oh, yeah. Good. John, I'm having a hard time hearing you, sir.
Yeah, I'll, John, if you're okay, hold off because there's some backfeed from that. If you record the names, Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Wartella? Mr. Schenkel?
Yes.
And I know we, we have a quorum there as the next item is, is to swear Mr. Holmes in. I think I, and Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt votes yes. I'm going to just, so now it would be, give me one second. I'm just bringing the oath up, Mr. Schenkel, Mr. Holmes, and I know Mr. Frisbee's on, Mr. Schenkel, I think he wanted to make a few comments, reference the, the council's assignments of committees for members.
Yeah, Mr. Frisbee, if you could just provide some context for this body and anyone attending on what we're accomplishing tonight.
Thank you, Jim and Matt. Yeah, you know, with my new responsibilities and with our council member, Rick Holmes, being involved, he's going into his third year here, I just felt it time to, well, maybe get some fresh blood on the planning commission, relieve myself of some of the responsibilities. And with the appointment that we've got, you know, Rick, for me, was the choice to put on any commissions, so. I know I introduced him to you. I didn't introduce him to the rest of the team, but, you know, I ask you, you welcome into the commission. I think we definitely came forward to his, his input. I don't think it was on the meeting agenda for tonight, but one of my visions, I want to throw it out there to everyone on the call. At, I would like to see us do some more forward thinking in, in terms of how the community wants to approach some of these events that are coming our way. I was reading an article that really spurred this in the state of Arizona for Airbnbs, that the state broadly wrote a blanket policy on them and the city of Sedona has got 20% of their population, their residences are listed as Airbnbs. And it has really turned into a nightmare there. They're having huge parties of 20 and 30 and do these different events and just causing a lot of discomfort in the community. So I think we just need to be a little forward thinking and, and a lot of these areas, you know, the downtown, I know I've spoke to this before with this group here, you know, we, we have a great format for giving grant money and putting money out to the business community, but there's no really guidance or policy of our expectations. So that's an area that I'd like to venture off into some of the areas, like I said, the Airbnbs or things are gonna be coming our way as this community grows that we just need to think about it forward and put some policies in place. So my thought is to put together a, a group of people, not a quorum from a council committee, but, you know, as I sit here and look at the team we have on this planning commission, you know, there's a couple of you on there that would be a perfect fit for it. So I would ask for you to consider it, you know, think about it. I'm asked the manager Mallory and Alex Lee to assist. I'd like Alex to, to help with the guidance of the, of the group and just keep us on focus and on task. So if you, if there's any of you on there, I'd appreciate, just drop me a line or an email. If you'd like to be part of a small committee, we're, I'd like to put together, one, the, the ideas coming out of that committee would obviously be put in front of the planning commission first for your guidance and vetting and input. And then as it progresses, you know, take it to the council. So with that, I just kick it off with Mr. Holmes. Thank you, Rick, and thank you for the team. I ask you to just welcome him into the, to the group and let's go from there.
Thank you, Jim.
With that being said, if Mr. Holmes can raise your right hand, it is a village ordinance that we take an oath for the planning commission. If you'll repeat after me, I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The ordinances of this village.
The ordinances of this village.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of planning commission member.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of planning commission member.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
In and for the village of Vicksburg.
County of Kalamazoo.
County of Kalamazoo.
And state of Michigan according to the best of my ability.
And the state of Michigan according to the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory.
I'll bring back the agenda for Mr. Schenkel.
Great, thank you. All right. Next agenda item number four, approval of the minutes. Just as a reminder, we did not have a January meeting and so we are approving the meeting minutes from December 14th. The items for discussion. Otherwise I'll call for a motion.
I do have one clarification. I know that on the, the draft that was sent out in the packet, there was three pages at the end. A blank page, a page that listed Mr. Newman as secretary, and I think myself, and another blank page. Those will not be part of the permanent record. It'll stop after the, the respectfully from Jim Mallory. I do wanna publicly thank Chris though, as I used his template from, I think, the July minutes he did.
Well, it was about, you know, seven years of getting it dialed in, so it should be worth something.
All right, I will call for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December of 2020.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from December.
Member Newman, do we have support?
This is Cox. I support.
Bill Cox on support.
John, if you're comfortable with it, I'll call out the names with the mic problem. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we will start, Mr. Hunt.
Yeah.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Chairperson Schenkel.
Yes.
Member Manchester.
Yes.
Member Wartella.
Yes.
Member Cox.
Yes.
Member Mucha.
Yes.
And Secretary DeBolt. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Holmes, member Holmes now will vote on that as well.
Yes, John.
Mr. Member Holmes votes yes. John, you're, I, I don't know what you're saying.
He wanted to know if Frisbee needed to vote.
No, no, Mr. Frisbee.
I forgot to say that. I'm out of here.
Mr. Frisbee has dropped the mic and left the building.
That's why John's having mic problems.
All right. Thank you for that. Agenda item number five, you will see public comment. We'll open this time up for any member or public comments. We'll be timed to three minutes. You do need to state your name, your address as well.
And we do have three people on the call, all I'm recognizing familiar. It appears they're all on computers, so you just move the cursor over the top of the screen, look towards the bottom. There's a yellow raised hand icon at the bottom of the Zoom call and go ahead and hit that if you wish to speak during public comments. And we'll give a little bit of time to see if anyone hits that button at the bottom of the screen. I'm not sure if everyone can see, but it's Ms. Coney, I think Jenny Holmes. Now that I look at it, it just says Jenny and then Ryan Wagner. And give it about 10 more seconds here for them to move a cursor and hit that raised hand button if they desire to. I do not see a hand raised, Mr. Schenkel, and I'll bring your agenda back.
Great, thank you. All right, agenda item number six, moving on to the village manager report. Manager Mallory, take it away.
Yeah, just real briefly and more wanna avail any comments from planning commission members. We did present the report, the audit from the 2019, 2020 fiscal year, which ended June 30th of 2020 at our January 18th work session in front of the council. That audit has been filed with the state, is a copy of the entire audit is available through our website on our Financial Transparency Center and as well, that entire presentation is on the village of Vicksburg's government YouTube page. So at a high altitude, real quick, give you highlights. We had Aaron Stevens, his team conducted the audit. He has over 25 years' experience in municipal auditing. As well as we had Steve Brier from Siegfried Crandall, who's a, Siegfried Crandall helps us with our monthly books as well, speak to the council. The audit first and foremost was without comments. Memory, most of the people on this call are aware that the village had received 10 internal comments for the audit going back to the fiscal year 1516, which is a rather high amount. Part of our goal internally was to eliminate those comments. I'm proud that this is the third year in a row we have had zero internal comments. Financially, the village had about $76,000 in general fund money at the end of that fiscal year in 2015. Happy to report we've ended this, the fiscal year back June 30th with slightly over $2 million. We've also continued to fund, pre-fund a capital campaign through governmental procedures such as financial commitments, which are for an updated village hall as we move to the future due to the needs there in the building not being compliant in the manner it should, as well as we did, had continued a tax stabilization fund commitment and then a series of assignments that identified future capital investments. And a couple of those capital investments that will work its way through the planning commission as well is continued downtown investments. One of the large ones are, we are through the budget process and identifying, looking at the large parking lot to the west of the hardware and west of Main Street in the 2627 fiscal year to have $700,000 cash on hand to completely redo that without the other goal that, that we have as a team and certainly directed and supported by the council is to not take on additional debt for the taxpayers. So no internal comments. We, on the single fiscal year, saved about another $440,000. And again, brought that balance to somewhere around 2.2, 2.3 million. I'd encourage all members, I will, I can send a link to this board members on the audit, so you have a direct link via email. But as well, if you have time, it's, it's about 58-minute presentation that is on the YouTube page that I'll link as well to watch the videos. I think it is very noteworthy that two individuals with a combined 50 years of municipal experience and in thousands, if not tens of thousands of municipal auditing, both made public comments that indicated the village of Vicksburg, they had not seen in their professional experience, a turnaround in the area of finances ever before with a village our size. And I'll conclude by thanking the members of this group, along with members throughout the village that recognize sometimes to get this financial ship righted, we had to say no. And at times that, that winds of change were discomforting to some, but we always received support from the council as we, we began this journey and continue to receive that support. And we've laid out a plan in front of the council and I think a little bit of what Mr. Frisbee spoke in regards to at the start of this meeting has where we're looking out again to the next, not only five years, but 10 years to can put this village just in a model best practices environment in how to operate a village. So I'll conclude with that and be happy to answer any specific questions that a planning commission member might have. I don't see any hand raised or comments. I don't see that, so I'll, if you're okay with it, Mr. Schenkel, I'll move to update on the infrastructure. I see a nod, yes. Basically, we, we gave the update. We had a company, the subcontractor within this large project began today removing the trees necessary to move along the route of this infrastructure project. The project will start down by the Spruce Street lift station located kind of by Brady Township Hall and the pavilion. Worked its way on Spruce Street up to Prairie and then eat, or westbound on Prairie towards Maine, Maine to Washington, Washington, back to the Washington Street Lift Station. There will be sewer work that goes west of Main Street on Prairie to Clark Park. And that project dirt will begin to turn up on Spruce Street. We're anticipating the end of this month or early March. I did mention before the meeting rang, but to let everyone know, you'll see heavy equipment is going to be brought in and parked at the historic village by the pavilion. And it will be east of that pavilion between the pavilion and Spruce Street to ensure that it's here before any type of frost oversight, so that project can get started. It will, the project is scheduled from start to completion to go about 13 months. I know a big aspect of the project is when will it be downtown? And we'll be updating you monthly. We'll be updating our website and social media contacts weekly and downtown merchants multiple times in multiple avenues. It's just too far out. It goes on excellent progress about 100 feet a day. We did have a no construction period from June 1st till June 14th. That's to ensure that if health department regulations would allow us to hold the car show, we'd be able to, to have that. And I think that's the 12th, 13th and 12th and 13th or 11th, 12th and 13th, somewhere in there of June. So we've, we've added that as well, but I'll pause and answer any questions you might have to that project.
Jim, this is Don Wartella. What can we expect in late August or September for activities at the historic village? We do have the, hopefully have the Harvest Fest and we have the bike-friendly Kalamazoo folks coming down on.
Yeah, the, the, the project, again, will go on Spruce Street to Prairie Street. So I anticipate that it'll be through that area and the street will be at minimum roughed in. If not Spruce Street finalized, so I don't, I do not anticipate it impacting those events, Don.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, yeah, that, that will conclude the report other than one action items, item that I had, if Mr. Schenkel wants me to explain the item 7A on the agenda.
Yeah, would you please?
Yeah, what we have is an Yeah, what we have is an opportunity, and as I've told this group, we talk about downtown development authority dollars. And though under the policy, this is under the amount that a village, it's a village manager, I could approve this. I do wanna come in front of the planning commission to receive support. One of the, getting back to kind of the progress we've made in the last five years financially in the village, you'll see here in the next six weeks, we'll be presenting not only an investment policy, but a fund balance policy in front of the council. And overwhelming majority, if not all progressive municipalities in this area through their fund balance policy will document what we've executed in the last five years. And that is you want to utilize revenue streams outside of your general fund on restricted dollars. And the DDA tax revenue that the village receives is restricted to the DDA area. What this request is, is twofold. First and foremost, it it can be used in this manner. And we're looking at purchasing 5,000 social district cups. It, it has to do with the social district area that's been approved by the village council. All five liquor license holders within the village are participating in this. That packet Andrew Horn is overseeing and has submitted to the state. Alex was, was given a task, has designed and finalized the social district cup to meet the regulations of the legislation as well as stickers that have to identify each of those five liquor businesses. So there were, what this 1,735 dollars will purchase is the initial 5,000 social district cups as well as 5,000 stickers. That's 1,000 stickers for each of the businesses. So what we looked at, the second part of this is the situation we're all dealing with here now going on a year with a worldwide pandemic and already stresses being put on our local personally owned businesses, which, which each of them are. And we have the ability in this to help the businesses out on the initial purchase, which will provide them 1,000 cups and 1,000 stickers. It'll also set up the relationship with the vendor so that then each business, when they need to replenish their stock of the social district cup, will work with that vendor to do on an as-needed basis at the individual establishment investment after tonight. The legislation requires a consistent cup that's identified as Vicksburg Social District. And then it further requires the identification from each of the businesses. So I'll pause there and answer specifically, we're looking for a motion of support to expend $1,735 out of the DDA section of the village budget. There is sufficient plenty of money to make this investment, but I'll pause and answer any questions.
Jim, this is Rick Manchester, so this is a one, just a one-time deal, just to help get it started?
Yep, to help get it started and help, the businesses had to, the fee to the state of Michigan was a $300 license fee. So we felt again, kind of in this era, they've been, all of those businesses were forced to close. And I think it was 160-some days in since March of 2020 that it was a way that this village, from our economic standpoint, could help the businesses initially and get those, those cups and stickers in their hands.
Okay.
That was too long-winded, the answer is yes, it's a one-time purchase.
Okay, thanks.
Hey Jim, it's Rick Holmes. You, you just mentioned the, the cups were finished, I was wondering, do you have a picture of the, of the cups or what, what they look like?
Nah, they're a clear cup with a couple of the buildings downtown, and it says Vicksburg Social Cup, Social District.
Jim, this is Member Mucha, question. Are you able to put this information on the village website? Just as a, like a Q and A, kind of more about what the district is, what the intent is, if it's not already there?
We can certainly, and the, and just so everyone is aware, the district is already approved by the council. We are looking at, when is the appropriate time to, because the next step, once we order the cups tomorrow is Alex will be tasked with, the legislation also requires specific trash receptacles as well as signage, and then add in this infrastructure project. We're just looking at the best options for the village. So, so we don't anticipate the social district being opened for a couple more months while, while that's all put in place.
So Jim, you're, you're seeking a motion for support. That needs to go through roll call as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Just one, one final question, if I could?
Sure.
Jim, so you mentioned also, I'm reading the agenda that coming soon will be reciprocals and signs that will also have the, the same image that's on the cups. And so at, at what point, I guess, will, will this commission or the council see what the image is gonna be on those signs and those cups?
The, the image isn't on the signs or receptacles, there might, there, there possibly could be. But we haven't even begun the research. Our first step will be on the receptacles to see the cost, what, what has already been planned with the infrastructure project? Because all the receptacles, benches, and that have already been selected on the infrastructure update. So, so our first step will be to determine, we wanna keep that same look, but it's just colliding with, the other option will be to get temporary ones. So it's a temporary object while this construction's going on downtown, first putting a brand new. So those are the two options we're, we're looking at. But we input it up with Mr. Mutual's suggestion on, on the design of, of, I guess I'll call it the logo, I don't think we're calling it internally that, but.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I, I understand the last time we went through this, that when we got public comment, that it was kind of a, it involved a lot of comment, I don't know the way to say it. But, and I'm not looking for us to do it this time again and realizing that, I was just, just curious again, you know, the, just trying to visualize what we're voting on tonight, I understand it's a cup, but.
No, the, the motion tonight is strictly the expensing of the money. The cup was never gonna be voted on. We, we solicited input from multiple areas, and then as staff, we made, made a decision.
Chair Schenkel, Member Mucha here?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve or support the expense of $1,735 to go towards the social district purchase of cups and stickers.
Thank you, motion by Member Mucha, do we have support?
This is Manchester, I'll support it.
Support from Manchester. Manager Mallory, will you do roll call for us again?
Certainly, Member Cox?
Yes.
Member Hunt?
Yes.
Member Newman? Member Newman was on mute, but I'll go with Member Mucha?
Yes.
Go ahead, Member Newman?
Yes.
Thank you, Member Wortella?
Yes.
Member Manchester?
Yes.
Secretary DeBolt? Member Holmes?
Yes.
Chairperson Schenkel?
Yes.
I believe that has everyone.
Jim, is this, is item 7B, would that fall to you or to Alex?
No, that's, that's me, and it's, it was just informational for no approval or anything. As we proceed forward, we'll determine what the infrastructure project has purchased. I'm also have a request to determine if there's more of that money within that infrastructure project to buy additional signage and that type of thing if it would get approved. So that's all what staff's working on now. But mainly it was for a reminder for me to mention to this group that it'll still be probably out there 60 days until it's officially open because we got, have to meet the, the legislation requirements, so.
My question, who, who's helping village staff kind of lead the charge on the social district and branding and creation, those kinds of things?
Well, the first step was getting it approved through the state. So, so we've worked with our village attorney, Andrew Horn, to meet the, meet what the legislation has and see, and get the council approval. As far as branding, that becomes a, a larger conversation piece. In, you know, in the confines of government of how it's structured in both at the council level and then in subunit government work. Internally, we, we have discussed that on how it, how it projects over the next five to 10 years and, and could impact the growth and sustainability of the village. And that was one of the original reasons that I brought Mr. Lee on board on this team was his background in that. I, I believe, and I think, you know, as, as we move forward, it would be my request to the council that's, that it, it's led by staff, and then we'll determine through, through the council and subunit government members as well as what was discussed tonight, if additional resources specific to the village would need to be brought in as we develop budgets and that.
Are you, are you soliciting, I, I would assume through kind of the work that Mr. Lee has done so far, you're probably soliciting feedback from downtown businesses, is that information?
Well, yeah, I think it's in, I'm sorry to cut you off, I didn't mean to, what, I heard, I, I, but I think it's important. What, one thing, a lot of this will fall into is an update of a master plan for the village. That's a process that will, will probably take over 12 months. So I, I, I believe, and it's my experiences in these endeavors to, the, the more time that can be developed on the front end, reference planning and realistic time schedule is important. So it, I wouldn't want anyone to believe that some, an endeavor like this would get staffed at any point of recommendations. Certainly not even by summer, but, but to begin to formulate a strategy, you know, I'd be happy if, if come July 1st that that was, that was clear.
Any other questions for Village Manager Mallory?
Yes, Member Cox, I have a question about item B there, just in regards to the receptacle. Has there been any talk about what brand or recommendations on, on certain purchases for that?
The, well, on downtown, yes, those decisions have already been made in the infrastructure project. All of those prices were secured as part of the bid of the contract, so they were specifically spelled out to, to the person who was awarded the bid, what would be purchased. So, and then we would want that look to be consistent throughout the downtown.
Is it, was, if I'm remembering right, it wasn't just receptacles, right? Were there some like planting beds and some other items like that?
So it's very, it's a whole new look downtown, from benches, different, no back benches to, to back benches in both directions, charging stations for cell phones, to receptacles, to dog waste stations, quite a number of items.
Okay. Do you recall, do you recall, like, are they like a landscape form type product or somebody else?
They're, they're, they're commonly found in municipalities. So it's a, it's, it's a well-constructed, they're black. The part of that project has all the downtown lighting coming out. And we'll get sandblasted and updated color.
I'm just curious about the specific brands, I've had to supply some of this stuff for different products, like, like, different projects. We specifically, I'm thinking about up at Western, we did one, and there's a variety, there's a huge variety in, in the manufacturers and the, the price and the quality is always consistent.
I can, I can send you that specific, I can let you know that the village invested a lot of money to have municipal landscapers from Pride Newhoff provide those recommendations. But I, I can send out what that name brand is. I can tell you the decision's already been made within that contractual bid and was awarded.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, yeah, I'm just curious what, if it's Pride Newhoff, they, I mean, they, it's probably a landscape form type product, so.
It most certainly, it most certainly has, and it's municipal standard of quality and, and, and should make for, for a long-term investment in use.
Yeah, if you could just to say aside my curiosity for that to me, I'd appreciate it, yeah.
I'll forward it to the entire council as a group.
Thank you.
I can't stress enough, though, that decision's already been.
Oh, I get it, I understand that, yeah, it's not gonna be a point of contention or anything, I'm just curious.
Jim, this is Don Wortella. The signs that you're talking about in 7B, those are just, are they just signs delineating the limits of the social district?
Yeah, the legislation requires that the boundaries are, are well-marked.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will move on to agenda number eight, member comments. Now I'll open it up, if you have any comments that you'd like to share, please share your name and share your comments.
Chair Schenkel, listen, Member Mucha? Hi Mike, I'd like to request from Village Manager Mallory that maybe in April of 2021, the mill can come and speak to all the progress they've been making in front of the planning commission of the recent months, and just provide an overview and an update, if possible, at the April or May meeting.
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll make that, that request.
No worries, otherwise if they can't, but I'd like to invite them to come and address the planning commission with all their progress they've been making out there.
If, if Chair Schenkel's comfortable with it, I, and I see Mr. Newman raising a hand. But if that wants to be, and I have no problem doing it, I'm just looking at, at the planning commission that maybe a, a vote that the entire commission wants that, and I think they do. We just, we usually don't take singular requests, and I know Mr. Mucha's not making that, I think it's a group request, but just if the record would reflect if that's what the chair wants in the group.
Would it be most appropriate to have a motion on that, Jim?
I, I think so, I, I'm going by memory, I think X amount of members can request the chair to put something on the motion. I think this is unanimous, I just don't. I, I think so. I, I'm, I'm going by memory. I think X amount of members can request the chair to put something on the motion. I think this is unanimous. I just don't. I wanna avoid a situation in the future that someone might ask for something and. I don't, does that make sense to you, Mr. Mooch? I don't want you to take it the wrong way.
If I can clarify, then um I guess I just would inquire with village staff if they would. See what the process or procedure would be to invite um the mill back to the commission.
I, I, yeah, and I, 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 I'm sure, I, I mean, we're in fact. We uh every other Tuesday and tomorrow morning will be uh talking to Ms. Cony and they always look forward to, to talking uh. In, in updating people, but I will certainly respond by email and then work with the chair to uh get it on the agenda. Either April or, or May.
Right, thank you. Member Newman?
Yes, um, I was just curious if there uh has been, since we didn't have a meeting in January. Uh, what are we looking at um as far as updates on parking? Uh, as far as updates on the re-codification, uh, I see Mr. Dirk is not with us today. Um, we're just kinda curious about some follow-up on that. Uh, I haven't seen anything in the last uh little bit. About that, and we're just kinda curious um if we'll be getting an update soon.
Yeah, um, Mi- Mr. Dirk is uh uh. Fairly beyond busy with the city of Kalamazoo. We didn't have a planning commission, so, so he had called. And I, I excused him from tonight's meeting. Uh, the re-codification, the last three ordinances that were approved by the council. That involved the infrastructure project, both on water, sewer and storm, have been sent to the company in New York. Uh, and that was done. Here in twenty twenty-one, um, we're waiting for them to get their final review back. Um, which should put us in a place, then we have to, to notice it publicly uh for three weeks. Um, so I would anticipate that that will all be wrapped up. But during this fiscal year for sure. That's given me a couple months of even uh grace period. I think it'll be sooner than the end of June. Uh, other things we've worked on is we need to, in this, more goes to Andrew Horn. Uh, had a meeting with him last Thursday and to finalize the PUD ordinance. And have that get on the books yet this fiscal year. And then uh we're, we're moving forward with uh governance over Airbnbs and doing that research. Um, the parking um is kinda uh put on a side um as. Uh, we continue to move forward uh from the mill's perspective. Um, you know, we, we're in hopes that, that this calendar year, we'll be reviewing event plans through that. And, and we'll have more details once those event plans are known through the mill. I don't know, this may, did that come through, Mr. Newman, or did? Um, thumbs up from anyone if it came through?
Heard it. I think, I think we lost Chris.
That's some of my best material.
Uh, I'd like to commend uh Manager Mallory and his staff for the job that they've done. Uh, with regard to the finances and the budget of the village. Um. That is one of the most difficult jobs uh that anyone can have, uh, speaking from. Uh, experience in a different city. Um, what you've done is no small feat and you should be. Very proud of the work that you and your staff have done over the last few years. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
If I could, I'd, I would like to thank uh President Frisbee for the assignment. Um, and joining this group. I'm really looking forward uh to it. And also would like to um add that regarding the subgroup that he mentioned. Uh, that's forming and looking ahead a little bit for areas of opportunity within the village. I would. Uh, like to join that group and be part of it. Um, I think there's a, a number of things. Um, in the village currently and even on the horizon that this group especially can be a part of. I think in many ways, if you look out, I think this group is gonna be central to um a lot of. Change and possibly even innovative ideas that the community, I think, is going to need to consider. As President Frisbee mentioned, one of them from Arizona. And so it's pretty exciting, uh, being a lifelong resident of Vicksburg to, to realize. That this is a kind of a once in a generation opportunity to be part of it, and so that's why I'm excited to be here because. I do believe that this group is gonna be responsible for a lot of that and um I, I appreciate uh Matt as well as. Uh, Village Manager Mallory's time to kind of share with them some thoughts and ideas that I had on that. And, and again, I, I appreciate their support as well as President Frisbee's and I look forward to working with everybody.
I'll say just one more thing. Thanks to uh. Uh, President Frisbee for his leadership on the planning commission. I'm not sure how many years you were on the planning commission, Tim, but uh. Appreciate that. Look forward to having Rick join us and have that fresh perspective that we're, we're looking for. All right, if there's no other comments, we will uh adjourn this meeting. It is seven fifty-two for the timekeeping. Everyone, stay warm.
Have a good evening, folks.
Take care, everybody.
You're still on there, Jim?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you very much.
Tim, if you're still on, stay on the call a second. Yep, no problem, Bill. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you, Bill. I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep. All right, yeah, bye. You know, I'll shut that off, John? All right.